I guarantee you, that thing ain't nothing, that thing is wrong. You can see my eyes fall up, you see the discoloration? Right, right. No, and I didn't go out to that bill, I know me, I be on grab some. It's swollen.
We'll gauge it. Same thing.
Just telling who it gets now. But look, the courthouse, they told me your daddy turned eighty, your daddy eighty.
He's dead.
And I'm sitting there on his birthday. Yeah.
And I'd rather do it to you.
Did he admit it?
He did. Asking us if we were gonna get the same joint.
It's supposed to adjustment to make this back rigid, do you know? Down there.
I don't, I don't, I don't. Well, I think it's on this side.
Good evening. The hour is upon us to call to order the October meeting of the Scotland County Board of Commissioners. I'm going to ask that Commissioner John Offer would lead us now in our invocation.
Would you bow with me, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you now for beautiful day and we ask your guidance and your blessings on this board as we make decisions that will affect all of our citizens. We thank you, God, for the privilege to serve. While we ask it in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. If you will, let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I ask for approval of our agenda, I do wanna just share with the community that Commissioner Ivy is not here this evening because of a family emergency. And we do ask that you would lift he and his family in your prayers and your thoughts. Fellow Commissioners, could I ask for approval of agenda?
So move second.
It's been moved and properly second. Approval of the gen- of the agenda, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. As have it. Public forum, we ask that those who desire to speak during public forum, when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address. And we do offer a three-minute time limit for you to speak. Uh, Mr. Robinson, do we have anyone other than Mr. Kelly?
That is the only one we have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, would you come forward at this time?
My name's Josh Hutt, my address is forty-four Eighth Street, well, East Hornburg. Uh, I've lived there about, uh, seven years and it's gotten worse. There's, uh, more junk over there. I got, I sent some pictures, I don't know if Miss April got it.
No, she was not able to retrieve those.
Okay, okay. Well, uh, it's more frontier down at the mill, where the mill is. Um, that, you know what my house is, that little, that, uh, field beside me and that trailer that's on Seventh is, you know, overgrown and the highway, on the highway, that stay on highway and the state's not cutting the state part, you know, that belongs to them. Um, also, we've, we, no, we had trash services through East Hornburg before. And I don't think that it's gonna do no good because when we did have trash services, it still was, you know, junked up. Uh, we need some type of, cause I don't think that a, um, uh, recycle center would do no good, cause it, it didn't do no good before when we had trash services through East Hornburg. Um, we've had a lot of thieves, but believe it or not, the shootings got better through the county, through East Hornburg. There's no, been no shooting here recently. But, um, and, you know, we got kids doing rocks in the roads and stuff too, off the railroad tracks. I don't know if, uh, we need to contact, what, East, um, Hornburg Southern or what? That's all I got.
All right. Mr. Kelly, we appreciate you sharing those concerns. Um, one of the things I will tell you is if you hang around later on on our agenda, our county manager has some plans that she's gonna share about some things that we hope to be able to do to help those issues uh, in your community.
All right.
Okay? Other Commissioners, you have any questions or comments for Mr. Kelly?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, we appreciate you. Before you, you see, uh, fellow Commissioners, our consent agenda items, what is your pleasure?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved improperly second that we approve our consent agenda. All in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right. We're gonna ask that Blackwell Audio Visual Representative come at this time to share information about E O C audio improvements.
Thank you, guys. I'm Timothy Walden, I'm with Blackwater AV Solutions. Um, first off, I'd like to express my gratitude for this opportunity to address you today and discuss the recent audio system upgrades that we had the privilege to install here at the Emergency Operations Center. Um, also, would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to the Scotland County Commissioners for entrusting our company with this project. So first off, why was there a need, uh, for this upgrade? Um, let me explain. We, our team came in, we kinda did a thorough analysis of your system and we identified a few key challenges. Um, first, we encountered some signal dropouts, uh, and inconsistent audio quality issues. We understand that this disrupted your communication and collaboration during, uh, critical moments, which is unacceptable, especially in emergency operation and meeting spaces. We proposed a comprehensive solution to address those issues, starting with replacing the wireless microphones. We installed eleven new wireless microphones with an antenna distribution system. And this system, uh, model is known for its reliability and high-quality audio transmission, as well as ensuring robust signal reception and coverage throughout this facility, eliminating those frustrating signal dropouts. In addition, we also optimized your system's performance by configuring your D S P. Um, and that addressed the previous issues as well as setting the stage for more efficient and effective communication just within your system. Um, in conclusion, the, uh, E O C audio system project aimed to enhance the audio capabilities within this facility significantly. Reliable wireless microphones, improved signal distribution and optimized sound reproduction are essential for effective communication during emergency situations and meeting spaces. Before I conclude, I'd like to open up, if you guys have any questions about the upgrades that we did to the system, um, I would love to answer those for you. Uh, but once again, thank you so much for allowing us to come in here and do these upgrades for you.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, we appreciate you all.
We look forward to seeing how well it works and how the public responds to it if they can hear us on these nights. That'll be the true test.
So those who are listening, whether you're in person or virtual, let us know if the upgrades made a difference. Uh, next, we're gonna ask that our Veteran Service Officer and Assistant Officer come with informational Operation Green Light. Mr. Mcnee.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Operation Green Light was an idea conceived in twenty-twenty-one up in New York with the collaboration of the National Association of Counties and the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers. This mission is to support for veterans and raise awareness to the unique challenges faced by veterans and to provide resources that are available at the county, state, and federal levels. North Carolina is the most military-friendly state in the nation. North Carolina has a third, or has the third-largest military presence in the entire country, as well as more than seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand veterans who call North Carolina home. In the proud spirit of North Carolina and Governor Cooper, the National Association of Counties and the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers are requesting that Scotland County government buildings, local businesses, and residences shine a green light during the week of November sixth through the twelfth in support of the veterans. These dates correspond with Veterans Day, which falls on Saturday, November eleventh. By shining a green light, we let veterans know they are seen, appreciated, and supported by Scotland County and by North Carolina. To assist with this project, my office, led by our newest member, Jamie McGee, made flyers, so if you would like to display them at your location. Also, Jamie went out to local businesses to discuss Operation Green Light. And we are hoping to, uh, get donations of green light bulbs, which we would gladly give to those who want one, as long as supplies last, of course. In your packet is a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. We will ask for your approval on this resolution. If you would like, Jamie has volunteered to read the resolution to you if you would like.
Please do.
Okay. Okay, resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the residents of Scotland County have a great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women that served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Scotland County seeks to honor these individuals who have made countless sacrifices by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of it all. And whereas there are approximately seven-hundred-thousand veterans in the state of North Carolina, with over two thousand of them being in Scotland County. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in our, in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as veteran service officers to help fellow veterans access more than fifty-two billion dollars in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately two-hundred-thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas, as estimated, twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And studies indicate that forty-two to seventy, seventy-two, forty-four to seventy-two percent, excuse me, of service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from military to civilian life. And active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year at the military service. And Scotland County appreciates the sacrifices of the United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans, Scotland County hereby declares from October second through November twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that in observation, in observance of Operation Green Light, Scotland County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all of those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in the window of their place of business or residence from November sixth, two thousand twenty-three to November twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you. Board, your pleasure.
Make the motion that we approve and adopt the resolution. Second.
So it moved improperly second that we will approve the resolution in support of Operation Green Light, all in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Let me say thank you, Mr. Mcnee, for your leadership in this project. And welcome to Scotland County and to, uh, being a part of our team, Ms. McGee. And we encourage citizens to stop by Corrick and pick up light bulbs, um, so that we can participate and show our support. Thank you all, we appreciate you. Mr. Graham, would you come forward at this time, Parks and Recreation Director, with an update on, um, Scotland Yard rebuild?
Thank you, Commissioners, Ms. Mcnee, Mr. Johnson, for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Scotland County Parks and Recreation. Uh, first, I wanna thank you guys for, you know, trusting this process. You know, obviously, you had to approve funds for this project, and I wanna thank you for that, you know, and trusting that, that you were in good hands when this was presented to you, you know, several months back. And this is a, this is still a monumental project, you know, we've, we've worked hard uh, over ten days of construction. And, um, over a thousand volunteers came out. Uh, that's about four thousand volunteer hours from the citizens here in Scotland County. So, you know, big hats off to everyone that participated, from businesses to civic organizations, municipalities, tribal entities. You know, we had a wide variety of people that, that came out to support this initiative. And, you know, we're still not finished. The construction aspect's finished on the project. Um, thank the Lord, you know? And we had, we had a, a tough week, you know, that, that first week was tough. We got some rain right before the project that made it a little harder. You know, we had some, uh, you know, we're digging out holes, we had to re-dig holes, you know, that were initially dug by the auger, so we had to get those back, uh, those, uh, pole diggers out. And they worked us, but, you know, all the screws are screwed. You know, we've, we've got a lot of coverage on this thing, you know, shout out to all of the local media, um, you know, media across the state that have highlighted this. Um, you know, U N C P put out a pretty nice video. You know, there's so many different people that, that, that participated in this. And if I started name dropping, I know I'm gonna forget someone because there's so many people that, um, stepped up big time. You know, from the, the residential individual that just brought out a drill or a saw to, you know, the, the bigger businesses that have contributed financially. I mean, so many, so many levels of gratitude that we have to, to give thanks to. Um, this isn't a Parks and Recreation project, this is a community project, and that park looks good. Um, you know, right now, we are finishing up some surfacing. Um, the A D A surfacing should go in in the next week or two. Now, this company does travel across the United States, so it's weather-dependent. You know, for them to finish the projects that they're on and come here and finish the, uh, surfacing out of, at the, at the park, but, you know, it looks good. And I'm sure you've been by there, I'm sure you've seen social media. Um, the ramps are up, you know, I, I can't wait to see, you know, that first wheelchair kinda climb up those ramps. And we're gonna have a, a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We want everyone to come out, especially those that have participated in it. We want the school systems to get involved because, you know, this park's for the community. Um, I mean, we're, we're ecstatic for the opportunity. You know, obviously, Parks and Recreation continues to grow on so many different levels, from community centers to park projects, our staff has grown, and that's from the support of you guys. So, you know, we're so appreciative of that. Uh, we are gonna open up picket sales. Uh, there's a lot of individuals and businesses that have reached out regarding that, putting their name on the park. I mean, it's, 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 it's an awesome feature. You know, the footprint expanded a little bit on the park, and it got a little taller. You know, those, those twenty-one foot six-by-six posts, putting them in the ground, man, they'll, they'll test you, they'll test your pride and your soul and everything else, that, that was tough. Tough picking those things up, but, you know, we're in a good place. The park looks good, and it's, it's thanks to, you know, every citizen here in Scotland County that, that participated in that, and especially you guys, just trusting us, that, um, that we would get this monumental project done.
Mr. Graham, I'll start, I'm sure other Commissioners have words to say, but I'll start by saying thank you to you and your staff for your leadership. Uh, and then thank you to members of our community. It, it really showed the, the heartbeat of Scotland County that we show up when there's a need. Um, I was at soccer practice with some five-and-six-year-olds about three days ago, who were very upset that, that we did anything to, to the, uh, Dragon Park, as they call it. And, uh, riding in the backseat, they said to each other, it don't look bad after all. Um, so we got their approval, and I think that's what matters the most, so thank you all. Any other Commissioners have comments?
Ryan, just wanna thank you for your, your dedication. You know, being on certain boards, Parks and Rec board with you, I know your commitment, so we really do appreciate the work you put in into, to what you do on a daily basis, so thank you.
Ryan, I wanna just repeat that, appreciate the work that you've done in the Parks and Rec Commission and your staff, cause this was a monumental achievement, y'all have been great. Take a lot of good planning, a lot of foresight.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I had to echo that statement because, you know, some of our staff put in eighty hours, you know, that first week that we were out there. And, um, you know, again, there's times that we're scratching our head and questioning this thing, but, you know, my staff's tough, you know, they, they stuck through it. It was hot out there at times, it was frustrating at times, but I give all the credit to them. You know, I tell them all the time, sometimes I get my picture somewhere, but I can't do it without, you know, the group. And it's a group effort. And it, and, and on this project, it was a community effort. I mean, over a thousand volunteers that came out, and a lot of them came out every single day. You know, that just kinda warms your heart to know that, that the people that you serve are there to have your back, so, you know, it's, it's an honor.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Mr. Wood from Cooperative Extension Services, would you come at this time?
Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing me tonight. Uh, I come before you to request a new position, uh, with cooperative extension. This position will be concentrated on row crops and pesticide education. And it's one that we're potentially looking at splitting with Hope County Cooperative Extension, with each county paying part of that salary. Um, this is the same type of position we currently have with horticulture, and we're just looking at expanding that into, uh, row crops as well. And this position came about, uh, I've been trying to make this happen for several years. In two thousand and ten, when I became the director, the gentleman who had been doing this exact role had been here for about thirty years, did a tremendous amount of on-farm research and was doing an excellent job while he retired. Um, and if you remember back to two thousand and ten, Commissioner Offerd, I know you remember this, that was not a good year, uh, in government. And it certainly was not the year for us to ask for new positions. Um, so we got sort of tabled and kicked to the curb, and I kept trying to find what I felt was an appropriate, uh, way to cost-share this position, basically find a partner to dance with. And the other day, when Hope County called me, based on some retirements and some restaffing they had going on, they were interested in splitting it, just like we have done with our horticulture. Um, so I was very interested. I spoke to North Carolina State University. They would love to see this position come to pass, and they have offered to fund that at forty percent with Scotland County and Hope County each putting in an additional thirty percent to fund that position. Um, if you equate that with salary and fringe, kind of our average starting salary, that would come in somewhere around twenty to maybe twenty-five thousand, uh, annually is what Scotland County's buy-in would be. Um, for this current fiscal year, uh, based on the salary that I have already appropriated in my salary line item because of some lapped salary, I think we're gonna be very close in having, already have the money in for this current fiscal year. Not gonna guarantee it, um, but I think it'll be really close. If, if we do run short, it'll be a pretty nominal amount. Uh, but obviously, the, the bigger ask would be for next fiscal year. That would have to fund the position for the full-time. Um, this is a type of position that we sort of look at. Uh, basically, they would have more expertise working multiple counties in one discipline. You know, with the kind of the opposite of the jack-of-all-trades, master-of-none. It's sort of the opposite of that, we want them to be a master of one area, uh, to have a lot higher level of technical expertise and competence. Um, so that's kinda why we're looking at this type of position and funded the way it is.
So I understood your letter correctly, that, that, that particular responsibility is being done by the current director, is that correct?
I have basically been doing two-and-a-half jobs since I became the director. Um, and it's, I've done as much as I can, but our row crop farmers, which bring in conservatively seventy-five million dollars per year, frankly deserve better than, you know, one-third of my time that I'm able to give them, so that's kinda why I would like to.
How long have you been doing that?
Uh, about eight years. So, finally got horticulture situated, um, and that has helped a lot. Um, we do get a lot of horticulture calls, gardening, that type of stuff, but the row crop position is based a little bit more on pesticide education, on-farm research, things of that nature.
Commissioners, your pleasure? Or any other questions?
Make the motion that we move forward with, uh, that position and, uh, hoping that the budget will take care of it for this fiscal year and, and fund it for the next fiscal year.
Suckling motion.
All right.
I, I got a question now. Uh, has, have, you say Hope County's already approved it?
They have, I haven't, it wasn't exactly at their county commissioner meeting, but they have given me all indications that they are going to approve it.
But they haven't approved yet.
I'm, I missed, Mr. Z, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I've, I've not been told otherwise.
Well, this motion would be conditioned upon the, the, the plan as you.
Of course, of course.
Thank you, that's where I was going with this, yes.
Miss, Commissioner Offerd, does your second go along with that change? Okay. So it moved improperly second that we would, um, approve the position request contingent upon all that Mr. Wood has shared. What is the, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? As have it. Thank you for your work, Mr. Wood, we appreciate you. Ms. Kimberly McCray, our interim D S S Director, will come at this time with D S S and SCATs request.
Greetings to the board and to the manager and to Lawyer Johnson and all, everyone here today. I bring you greetings from Scotland County Department of Social Services, and I come with two requests. The first request is an approval for the Scotland County Area Transit System fifty-three-eleven grant. And that grant provides transportation, coordinating existing transportation programs operating here in Scotland County. The administrative cost would be a hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars, and the local share would be twenty-five thousand, two hundred eighty thousand, excuse me, two, twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars at fifteen percent. The capital, which is vehicles and other, would be a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and the local share would be thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars at ten percent. The total project funding request would be three hundred eight thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars, and the local share would be thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. So we are asking for approval for that particular grant, the fifty-three-eleven.
Hold on, one second.
Thank you, Kim, this, this is also a public hearing.
So before we actually vote, Commissioners, we do wanna open the floor, um, because there may be persons present who'd like to speak during the public hearing. So I want to declare public hearing open for the SCATs fifty-three-eleven grant at this time. If there's anyone here, um, from the public who'd like to speak for or against it, we invite you to come and speak at this time. Going once, going twice, three times, I will consider the public hearing closed and ask what is the pleasure of this board?
To approve the SCATs fifty-three-eleven grant. And the amount for them.
For them to apply.
Yes.
And, and that's for fiscal year twenty-five, so.
Thank you. So it's been moving improperly second that we will grant permission to our D S S to apply for the fiscal year, um, twenty-twenty-five grant, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? As have it. Ms. McCray?
When you say twenty-five, you're talking about twenty-four, twenty-five?
No, I mean, yes.
Twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year.
Not next year, but the next.
We still ahead of the game, right?
D O T has these grants in very early each, each year, so, almost two years.
That's all right.
Sooner the better. All right, Ms. McCray?
Okay, thank you very much. And the second request is as a result of the Medicaid expansion going live on December the first, two thousand twenty-three, and we are expecting a large number of qualified applicants to benefit from this health insurance program right here in Scotland County. The department is requesting three additional Medicaid positions, two income maintenance two positions, and one income maintenance supervisor two position. The total in salary with fringe benefits of all three positions equals a total sum of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, which has already been budgeted for this fiscal year. The positions are all reimbursed at seventy-five percent administrative reimbursement. The state has also given the county fifty-seven thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars The state has also given the county fifty-seven thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars in operating costs for the expansion. With seventy-five percent reimbursement from state funds, these positions will come at no cost to the county for this fiscal year. So that's a very important position and we're ready to list the positions and get someone in so we can start this program December the first.
I'll make a motion. Before I make a motion, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Do we have anybody doing Medicare fraud? Starting position fraud?
We do have a fraud worker, yes.
Currently, we do.
We do currently, yes.
Okay. Ms. McQuaid, what, how, how many additional, um, how much additional applications are you expecting to have?
Well, uh, the state was here today and they are not sure yet. They're, they, they do not have their numbers. But it is expected to affect six hundred thousand North Carolinians. But as far as breaking it down from county to county, they have not put the numbers in for that yet, but they know that we will expect a large influx.
So this number is just a number you came up with thinking that they would accommodate?
I, I'll, I'll help Kim out for a minute because these three positions came up while I was still, still at DSS. You know, they've been talking about Medicaid expansion for well over a year. We thought it was coming. It, it got pushed back. And so we were sent a formula per se and a spreadsheet at the time to say, how many residents do you have that get Medicaid? Of course, it asked for some other data points. And that is what the magic formula spit out that Scotland County would need is about three more positions.
Yes, sir.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
It will come at no cost to the county for this fiscal year.
Correct.
Approximately what would it cost the county?
Next year, uh, we are reimbursed at seventy-five percent through the state from Medicaid, so twenty-five percent. And like I said, with the total sum of the salaries plus fringe of, for this year, it would come up to one hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. So next year, we'd be looking at approximately twenty-five percent of that amount.
Twenty-five percent of the one fifty-eight, one fifty-seven.
Correct. We're reimbursed at seventy-five percent from the state at this time.
And this year, as Kim mentioned, we got additional Medicaid expansion funds. And so they could give us more of those next year. You, you know, you just don't know from year to year.
It's a service we have to provide. We should provide.
Absolutely. It's a mandatory so, service for your county. Good program. It will include a lot more of our adults as well.
I make a move to approve the three additional positions.
Been moving in probably a second that we will approve three additional Medicaid workers due to Medicaid expand, expansion. What is the pleasure? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign? Ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. McQuaid.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Mr. Lash, our landfill manager, would you come at this time with landfill position request? A lot of position requests tonight.
We, we just, we just reached our quota, I think.
Good evening, all. We currently have a seasonal worker at the landfill. He's been there. His term ends on October thirty-first. We have a position, a full-time position that the man will be retiring in June after nineteen years. And this guy has come in as a seasonal worker. He was hired to just come in and take care of the grass, weedy, paint, and he has taken total charge. He's expressed interest. He's been running equipment. He's been learning different jobs. He's a real go-getter. So I'd like to take him and make him a full-time employee at this time.
As I was reading this, you mentioned that you spent a B B three point five thousand so far in overtime and it's projected you spend fifteen thousand by the end of the year.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, and I was, my concern is you said that would, if we fund this position, it would reduce the overtime. My question is the other staff that's working overtime, once we, should we approve this position, fifty-two thousand dollars? Would that cut out all of the other overtime by staff?
No, sir, it won't. Um, and the reason is a lot of my staff, we only have nine people, total employees, that includes mechanic, scale house attendant, myself. We have two drivers and we have two positions that have to be covered all the time. So with all the projects going on at the landfill, we don't have enough personnel to cover those projects. A lot of these guys are new. They're on probation right now. Four of them are on probation. And they all have to be brought up to speed. They all have to learn their jobs. They all have to learn the equipment. So a lot of the overtime actually comes from me trying to do as landfill supervisor, landfill manager. I took over a lot of Brian Higgins responsibilities and we took over a lot of Scott Parks's responsibilities. So it all came kind of down to me plus training and supervising my staff. So right now we have a young staff that needs supervision and training and we're working to get there. And for this year, I would say we're not reduce the overtime in, in a large.
I'm just trying to understand the operation if you would help.
Sure, go ahead.
This training can't be done between eight and five?
Yes, that's when it does take place. That's correct.
Then that would be overtime, normal hours. I guess I'm trying to understand the training, how, how it's going to be overtime.
If it's during, during regular, regular business hours.
I just don't understand the operation. That's why I'm asking.
Oh, a lot of, a lot of my work, okay, is in a ten-hour period. And that includes getting there early, setting everybody up, the supervising, then when I go home, doing a lot of the business work, the emails, phone calls, that I don't get to do during the day because I'm working with these guys and involved in projects. Because if you work everybody out in their position in order to do an extra project, we don't have an extra man. And we used to have, before COVID, we used to have three full-time employees from, that were inmates. Once COVID came, the inmate program was done away with it. So we're shorthanded when it comes to, to men. So we have, I'll run it real quick. We have scale house tenant. We have mechanic. We have myself, supervisor and overseeing the transfer station, the recycle centers and doing the paperwork for the state, all that. And then we have two drivers, full-time. And then we have a C and D hill and a transfer station and all those areas have to be covered every day. So leaving only two men to get all the projects with me being one of them.
On average, how much, on average, how much would you say you were overtime a week?
Approximately ten hours, eight to ten hours a week.
Oh, for another day?
Per week. Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll speak to a minute. Me and Mr. Bill, I've been talking about the overtime and, um, projects and prioritizing projects and working out scheduling. I think Mr. Bill walked into this overtime model and so that's something we're working on. How, how can we get what we need done at the landfill without accruing a lot of overtime every day and every week? And, and, and part of that will be why he's come and asked to transition this seasonal position, which is partially in the budget into a full-time position. Now, to his point, that doesn't give him a, a lot of extra work hours tomorrow if this happens because this person has been working full-time all summer already. And so it's, it's something we'll take a look at and continue to look at the scheduling and are we understaffed out there or are we not? Is this about scheduling? Is this about priority, prioritizing projects? What is this overtime about?
Well, it, let me ask now, maybe I heard this wrong, but didn't you say you had somebody that was about to retire?
Yes, sir. In June.
So, so what you're asking is someone to go in that position and an extra person?
That's correct.
That's what you're asking for, okay.
The ask is really just for the new pos, new position. He'll feel that once that person.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I just, I'm, I'm just clearing that up.
He's currently working, he works forty hours a week, full-time right now, and we utilize him every minute. So with the seasonal position, that'll end. So I'm asking for that seasonal position become full-time.
And in, in, in this budget, you have, the funding is there this year to transition over into full-time because we do not have a department head and we're not paying a department head salary at the landfill right now. And so the funding is there, um, at the same level it was last year. So rolling into next year, in theory, the funding would still be there.
Are we, are we looking to replace the department head?
We lifted that position.
Okay, that's, so, so, so there's, 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 that position is gone, but the money that was budgeted for that position is still there.
Correct.
And that's an employee that, I don't, I don't know how much work that particular individual did, but that's one employee that they no longer have.
Right. And to get back to the overtime, that's the position that I'm picking up most of that work while also maintaining landfill manager position and also doing part of code enforcement job.
You're picking up a lot of the work that was being done by the director.
That's correct. I, I picked up all of it.
Was the former director doing all of that?
I can't say. Uh, I, I wasn't in this chair. Um, and, and you have to remember as, as well, when that solid waste enforcement was moved over to the sheriff department, some of that still remains with the landfill, some of that work.
Well, he wasn't supposed to be doing nothing at the landfill.
He worked for the land.
Solid waste was supposed to be out writing tickets and taking trash, eh?
He did some work with recycling.
His job at the landfill.
Excuse me one second. Uh, Ms. Manager, can I ask this question? Based upon when this position, I know it's going to end on the thirtieth, but it sounds to me as if it would be in our best interest to allow you, if you can, the time to figure the overtime out and probably some reorganization before we actually do this. Or will we need to approve this and it be in effect once that's done? Because to approve this without fixing that problem creates bigger problems for our county, I think.
I think we can extend that seasonal, um, position. We can extend that beyond the thirtieth, so.
So Commissioners, I mean, because there's so many uncertainties, would you all be agreeable to do that? Let's not do anything with this tonight. Let her work on all those issues that we're talking about and then come back with a better plan.
Yes, because I have one issue I'd like to raise since we're on this. We have signs up at our waste sites that they open at eight o'clock on Mondays. And when we go there, I'm speaking from experience, we have to wait up to twelve o'clock before they're dumped because they're filling. There's an issue there. They're being dumped. So that the site will be open to receive all trash at eight o'clock. As citizens, as citizens, we're lining up.
You talking about the, the, you talking about the, the.
Countywide.
Yeah.
Countywide.
Okay.
But they open it, I, I don't understand your question because they open at seven.
Okay.
So how do you?
Okay. And I drive up at eight o'clock and I'm told it will be approximately twelve o'clock before they're dumped, certain one. And that's an issue and you probably don't know about it, but we need to look into that because we're told to go to the landfill or come back later. And that happened to me more than once over the past few months. And that's something that we can, it's not your problem.
No, it is my problem.
Well.
And, and I'm trying to work with y'all to correct that problem because it is a problem.
So Mr. Lash, here's what we're going to do.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Alford, if it's okay.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to get on you.
No, no, no.
Ms. Ms. Manager, I think you've heard the concerns that we've shared. I'm going to ask that you take his requests and our concerns and work on a plan that helps to rectify some of these issues and then come back to us at our November meeting with a, a recommendation.
Well, I'd like to say something. I think we all know the situation with the landfill. I'm, I'm going to say it just like that. So by saying that, I think it needs to be looked at the way it's ran. Do we have too many people? Do we not have too many people? I like what BJ just said, Mr. Commissioners just said. But I, I agree with him now. I think we need to look at it and see exactly what we do need, what we don't need. We got a problem with the, with the stations around the county as, as Commissioner Alford said. I think this needs to be looked at.
Yeah, the whole operation.
The whole operation, that's correct.
It's going to take some time.
You know, not, not, nothing against, uh, this gentleman here because he's just coming into it. But the former supervisor or whatever he was, but, uh, I think it just needs to be looked at. And, uh, because, because I think, I think Mr. Mr. Gibson had some problems. I know some other people's had some problems. So I, I think it really needs to be looked at.
So County Manager, we're trusting you to take care of that.
Absolutely. We'll work, we'll figure that out.
Thank you, Mr. Lash.
Something back.
Commissioners, you all have anything else?
But I don't, I, I do think it's, needs to be said that they're operating one less person than what they did a year ago. The work, the work hasn't gotten any less. I, I'm not disagreeing with what the plan we've got. That's the, that's to investigate what we've got, but I think we, to Mr. Lash's point, they're, they're operating with one less body than they did six, eight months ago, wherever they were.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lash. All, all right. You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
There's a lot that can be said, but we, we, we're going to not say it. Yeah. Next on our agenda is Health Department Awards. Ms. Dever did notify County Manager that she would not be here, so we're going to move, move past that. Commissioner Chair Ivy was supposed to speak about John Blue House discussion. County Manager is prepared to speak on that now.
So the John Blue House, um, I'm sure you have heard the, um, the house is in very bad condition, especially the porch. Uh, and honestly, it is falling in. And if so, something isn't done to repair that very quickly, then it's really going to be a waste. So from what I understand, there is funding out there to begin this project. The state legislature did not fund what that, uh, board was hoping for. They funded fifty thousand dollars. So it's going to leave, according to Mr. Ivy, about a one hundred thousand dollar deficit that's going to be needed to complete the repairs to that porch and some of the foundation. I don't know that the foundation is the biggest problem uh, other than the porch. And, and so that's what he was going to present to some degree. I'm sure he would say a lot more than, than I have. Uh, so he wanted to bring this up to the Commissioners and, and see if there's anywhere you wanted to go with that, with that one hundred thousand dollar deficit.
And I've just got some questions tonight because I, didn't we allocate?
Some art funds?
I'm going to say some, I'm going to say a hundred fifty thousand.
Think, I, see, ain't no need to me asking you this. When was the last time we actually done anything as far as construction wise?
To the John Blue House? And I'm looking at people in the audience that are, are part of that. And I think there's been small repairs, but it's in need of extensive repairs to, to keep it standing at this point.
Ms. Beth, out of our art funds, do you recall how much we allocated to John Blue? Sure, come for it. And happy eightieth birthday.
I'm on the John Blue Historical Properties Committee and we've been working sometime on this house. If any of you have looked in the last three years, nothing has been done in that house. We have been fighting, trying to get a grant. It's took three years and we have been told that the grant's approved, but we've never seen no money. So.
How much is that grant supposed to be for?
Hundred twenty-eight thousand.
That's what I thought. So we've been approved for that, but we haven't received it.
That, the state has approved it. That, the state has approved it, they tell it.
Mr. Butler, what all's wrong with the house?
Pardon?
What all is wrong with the house? What, what all repair does it need?
Well, I think uh, the porches are about to fall off today, Mike. Mike went out of his day and put stakes up and brace the porch post so they don't fall off. He did that today, I read. But the uh, you guys allocated a hundred and fifty thousand for us, it's still sitting in limbo. Fifty from uh, the state and we're asking for another hundred thousand. We have had some estimates, I've had one estimate come out there. He said four hundred thousand, I mean, he'd looked at it. But then we had another guy come and look at it and he has said about two eighty-one is his fix. But we, again, we kind of limbo because we can't do anything to the house because of that state grant. Uh, and we waiting on the architect.
From what I, correct, what I understand about the state grant is that they have been ordered the grant. And the architect has to submit plans to the state. Uh, the architect, I understand, has the plans, is working on the plans and should be submitting them. And so, um.
So that's the holdup?
That is the holdup and so Ms. Hobbs has inquired.
The architect, the architect is hold up on the grant.
That's what we understand, Ms. Hobbs has inquired of the state at least two times this month. Have you got it? Have you got it? What's going on? And that's where we're stuck.
Gentlemen, the house is gonna fall down if we don't.
Can we, can we not? If we've allocated a hundred and fifty thousand, can we not spend that toward beginning to make those repairs?
Not, excuse me, quit, but not according to the state. Now, they haven't told us not to use any of that money and start to work, but they're saying they don't recommend.
If the state don't send it, it ain't.
If we, if we go in and do some work, they could take that grant back.
That's what happens.
State don't send.
Well, then why, we, then if you're asking us for an extra hundred thousand, you can't spend that either.
That's exactly right. We, but what some of us have been talking about is we're gonna tell them what to do with the grant.
Well, Mr. Mr. Butler, reason I was asking what was wrong with it. So this is pretty urgent that we do something pretty quick, is that? Because you're saying you had it, having to brace it up now?
Well, I think they have to, I attribute this more bit. The lady come down and looked at it last time, been two years since she'd been down. And she said, I can't believe how it's deteriorated in two years. Oh, it is, inside's okay, really, went in, looked, little plaster cracks, but that's cosmetic. But the outside, the porches, they are fallen out if we don't do something for long. I keep saying that house is the hood ornament of Scotland County. Every brochure you got, you got that house on it. Every brochure period, that house is on it, so that's where we are. It's, it's kind of a case twenty-two with the state.
Yeah, but you said something a minute ago when we'd asked you a question, you, you want to be able to tell the state what they can do with that hundred and twenty-eight?
Well, that's the way I.
Yeah, but I don't think that'd be a good.
No.
Point is, we don't have a hundred and twenty-eight to replace it with.
But, but we, we've been approved, but we have, we don't have any money and can't go to work, you know, it's kind of a.
We have approved a hundred and what?
Fifty.
Fifty. And if the state does not, if we don't get that, then we will need to do another hundred and fifty. The county, and that's the catch twenty-two.
I think we had, we had a little emails back and forth, Beth helped me out with this. But we, we asking them that, when you gonna meet and talk about this? And they tell us the historical preservation people are not working but three days a week and some of them are not at home. We don't know when we're gonna get anything from the people.
So are we willing to forego the one hundred and twenty-eight thousand if the county gives the other hundred? Is that what I'm, what I'm hearing?
I don't think I want to say that, no.
But if we start work on it.
The architect need to step up and do it.
Submit the problem.
And, and we met with him about, probably about three weeks ago. He's saying sometime in November, he'll have some information for us.
Information or will he have it done?
And then, then he's talking about the foundation, putting ramjacks under the pillows and all of that.
Mr. Butler, do you, do, it sounds like the architect has had this for some time.
Oh, three years.
Three years. Um, do we have some contract with him?
Not to my knowledge, yeah.
I think we need to get another architect.
The contract with the architect is uh, with the state. The winter are in, uh, this is awarded and the state uh, signed up on the contract once we select where to get it.
Is there a, is there a term? Have a date when the work is, their work is supposed to be completed?
I don't recall that information.
I don't recall.
Would, would you have a copy of that?
It should, it should have been a timeframe.
There should be a term limit on it.
No.
Usually there's a term limit.
If we end up not being able to spend the money that's already been allocated, including the fifty thousand from the legislature and the hundred and fifty that's already been done. And, and that building is damaged beyond repair. And that, that firm is, is responsible for that not taking place. I would think it would be worthwhile for our, the county attorney to look at that contract and take some action to see what's, what the problem is.
And Mr. Johnson, a grant that's postponed like that? I mean, are they postponing the grant? Normally there's a timeframe on it.
Yeah, now the grant, the grant is, we'd have to spend the money first and then they would reimburse, that's what that grants.
Well, or we, one of the things, if they would just allow us to go ahead and spend money to do the repairs that we're talking about. While we wait for that grant to.
But will that end up like the, the other grant? If we spend the money first, then we lose the grant.
Fellow Commissioners, uh, Ms. Neat has a message to share from our chairman.
Um, Mr. Ivy texted and he is under the impression that it, that this hundred thousand we need. If we had it, we could begin to spend it and it is not tied to this grant and wouldn't, and it would not forego this grant. That is his understanding. Um, now, most of these state grants come with a scope of work. You write the scope of work and they approve what you're gonna do. Sometimes you can also change the scope of work, especially, I think this is special circumstances. We have been put off for three years apparently. And I wonder if we could change the scope of, do part of the work we need now. The state allows to change the scope of work and then use that hundred and twenty-eight thousand to keep the project moving along. Once it's architect submits what he needs to.
Well, this question is for Beth, Ms. Beth.
Yes, sir.
Can we allocate any of the art, art funds towards this project?
That's one of those, I think Chairman Gibson asked if we had allocated that. I'm gonna have to go back and look through my records and through the management, because I don't recall the dollars.
I, I would, I think we did, but I, I certainly don't want to trust my memory on that. But if we hadn't, I would certainly be in favor of allocating a hundred thousand dollars for them to begin work immediately.
I agree with you, I would too.
So what is the pleasure of our board? Given the, I mean, we've allocated, I know something from our, um.
Somebody's gonna have to fix this motion, I'm sure. But my motion would be that we, we allocate, if we've, if we've allocated a hundred and fifty thousand and we can spend that without affecting the grant, that we spend up to a hundred and fifty thousand of that money. That if that money cannot be spent, that we allocate a new hundred thousand dollars. So that they can begin the, the, the construction, the emergency construction work on that building.
And in February, your last ARPA spreadsheet had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars dedicated to historic properties.
Sorry, what'd you say?
In, in February, your spreadsheet, I assume that was during budget time, you had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds dedicated to.
My, my motion would be that we spend that hundred and fifty thousand dollars on those, up to a hundred and fifty.
I'll second that motion.
And, and if, and if for some reason we find that's not possible, that we come back before this board for an allocation of a hundred thousand dollars.
Right. I think the biggest thing I look at.
Hold on one second, I've got a motion on the floor. Did you second that motion? Yeah, all right, it's been moving properly second that we will spend up to the one hundred and fifty thousand we've allocated. And if we're not able to do that without affecting that grant, that we'll come back before this board to request another hundred.
That, that, yes, sir.
Correct, and I, and I think Mr. Ivy is, is making sure I'm clear that this hundred and fifty will not fix it. There may be a request for another hundred.
Okay.
We've also got that hundred and twenty-eight.
Just hanging out there. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by the sign of I?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, ayes have it.
Gentlemen, I want to thank you for that because uh, thi- this house needs to be fixed and this is a showcase for Scotland County, so.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do, Leon.
Thank you and happy birthday again.
But we're not gonna sing to, we're not gonna sing to you.
Yes, sir. Well, did you hear me say happy birthday? All right. Mr. Mike McGirt, would you come forth with a report on ILS Johnson?
Commissioners, I'm pleased to announce that uh, inspection department gave a CO for the uh, operation of the IEJ uh, community center. Uh, as of today, all work had been completed. Uh, only thing we're liking is getting Spectrum in to finalize some uh, cameras and uh, uh, internet services and uh, hopefully that shouldn't be too long, but that shouldn't affect us as the daily operations of the facility.
Wonderful.
Have any questions, uh, be more willing to try to answer?
When you, when you say that, you're talking about the gym or you're talking about more than just the gym?
The gym and the media center, everything's up and operational. Everything meets the inspection requirements, we will be getting the letter tomorrow. Uh, it's got a, a new key system on it, so uh, but it'll be, uh, we can turn it over. And we are at Spectrum's mercy right now to get them to come in. Uh, they've got all the plans in place, just getting the equipment ordered and getting installed, but uh, that's, that's in the works.
Mr. Graham, Ms. Need, are we prepared to uh, start co- having a conversation about a grand opening, ribbon cutting, any of that? Now that we have the CO?
I mean, you can. You know, I, I've shared some concerns with Ms. Neat, you know, regarding staff setup there. It's not comparable to the staff that other community centers in terms of a part-time position. You know, our supervisor that we hired, Brayden, and, and I'm sure she'll be taking some lead at some points, at least one staff.
Did we get, did we have part-time?
In addition to it, um, there, there, the, the operational budget for this project, which I've shared this as well, is half of the operational budget um, as Laurel Hill. Laurel Hill opened up last year and the operational budget's about sixty thousand dollars in terms of operating the facility. IEJ was allocated thirty thousand dollars.
Wow, wow.
I was just informed that we, we have to kind of watch our spending and we haven't even opened the door. We still have to purchase the software in terms of, and I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. You know, I'm just throwing this out there for us to be able to, you know, efficiently prepare and open the door.
Brian, 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 move to the microphone if you don't mind.
Yeah, I was just speaking in terms of, um, you know, the, the operational aspect of IEJ. You know, we, the staff isn't comparable with other facilities and the operational budget that was put in place is half of the budget um, at, at Laurel Hill. That's the one I can think of right offhand. It's, it's thirty thousand dollars, Laurel Hill was initially sixty thousand. So, you know, we still have a few things that we, we need to purchase in terms of, the facility can open and I think we can be operational. But the investment that you guys and the community has put into the center, you know, I, I think those funds need to be the same as other facilities, just for it to be fair.
But don't you need to come back to us?
An actual addition?
Come back to us with a plan, tell us what we need to do.
I, I can speak to some of that. Uh, and I wasn't here when the budget was created, but we also knew that I Johnson wouldn't be opening for an entire fiscal year. Ms. Hobbs can speak to some of this, so I assume it wouldn't be given the same allocation as another center that would be operational for an entire year. And so you can budget less. Uh, clearly, we're gonna have everything they need to open when it opens. We talked about staffing, um, Mr. Graham has been in the middle of this build for, for really two weeks now. And so, um, we, we have talked about staffing and looking in the salary for that part-time staff.
Well, for next year's budget.
It'd be the same.
Need you to increase.
Absolutely, and if, and if what is in there doesn't make it operational, clearly, we are going to make it operational for the rest of this fiscal year.
You, you understand what she's talking about?
Yes.
So, Mr. Graham, do you have in your budget the funds to hire that part-time person like the other centers have?
I'm not sure, you know, I, I, I'm not sure, I'll be honest with you. I, I don't, I don't know those detailed numbers.
Well, if you got, if, if, if you got half the budget of what, what the others just got, but you only open half a year, it's gonna be the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, and I was speaking in terms of the operational budget, you know, programming, uh, getting it set up and things along those lines. Not so much the staffing allocation, I don't even know that number right off. But we do have two full-time staff hired at uh, IEJ. We just need that part-time position because again, you know, in, in a few months, we're gonna lose a staff person. And, and I'm sure we can adjust our staff over at Scotland Place to cover it. But, you know, it's only fair to them to, to be equal to other facilities. And, and I think that needs to come from you because I don't, I don't think it was put in the initial budget, I'm not sure. I know you and I have kind of had some conversations on this, but I'm not sure if it, that was initially put in there. I know there was two full-time positions which we've hired and, and we've had them on staff now for a couple of months. Um, you know, and they've been training and helping in other areas. But that part-time position is important because we don't want to have, you know, one person at the center uh, alone. You know, that's kind of what we, we like to do with other facilities, we like to make sure there's two people there. There's also an AARP potential opportunity. We just got an AARP position at the Laurel Hill Community Center and that's a free position to the county, um, so.
Well, we want IEJ to look like the other center.
So how many positions you have at each center?
So we have two.
How many people's working at each center?
Two full-time positions and a part-time position at Laurel Hill and the Weygum Recreation Center. Right now, we have two full-time positions at IEJ that are hired.
And also those, those, the positions you just talked about that come at no cost to the county.
Are they at Laurel Hill?
From top of what you already have.
Yes, there's, there's AARP positions at Laurel Hill, Weygum and Scotland Place. And that's no cost to the county, they work approximately twenty hours a week. It's, it's a senior citizen that, um, you know, does either janitorial or clerical duties.
And there's no reason why you couldn't add a position just like that at ILS Johnson?
Yeah, we can, um, I, I, Ms. Ms. Mayner with that program likes to see the, the facility open and operational. You know, to, um, to give us time to get things figured out, to be able to put someone in that position. And it's generally from Scotland County.
I also just said while we're in the midst of figuring out the hiring and the part-time and is it in salary? Those part-times and those ARP's can rotate as well as to where they might be needed. Because Brian's right, we're gonna have someone going out. Um, I would think we could get somebody higher before she goes out, hopefully. Um, but we, we can rotate staff, that, that's not totally out of the question uh, to where we need them. Especially if one already has their two full-times, their part-time and an ARP sitting there.
But, but I guess my question though, Ms. Neat, is, is that part-time position in the budget, like the other places?
Part-time positions are budgeted differently than full-time positions. Um, and so Mr. Graham has asked that. And so I've looked, I think it's there. It's a matter of sitting down and seeing how far, of course, your salaries dollars stretch, right?
Okay.
But, you know, what?
We need to, we need to make sure it's there, if it ain't there, we need to put it there, figure out a way to get it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think we can open the doors and operate. Um, we, we do have some wifi connections that are portable that we could potentially put in place for a, a small timeframe, you know, so that the staff there does have, um, you know, resources in place in terms of connectivity and, and, um, you know, things that they need to do on a daily basis. So I mean, I, I would, I would leave it up to you to, to let me know when you want to open the doors because we have staff in place. We have equipment that's been purchased, we have a brand-new facility, um, and, and, and our staff's itching to get those doors.
And we don't know how long it will take Spectrum to get the cameras and we've sent the information in for the wifi and the camera. So I guess that plays into Brian and your decision too, do you want to open before your cameras are up and running? Um, like he said, he's got some portable ways to do the wifi. Um, but we're.
I don't.
Mike did say Spectrum was out there Friday.
Friday night.
Running some lines, so they have started, we just don't know a completion date on that.
They didn't give you a timeframe, Mike?
No, sir. Uh, I can, I got a meeting scheduled Wednesday, uh, back with uh, our contact and I can get a update and get it back to you.
Why, why don't we, why don't we try to, I don't, I think it's. Why, why don't we, why don't we try to, I don't, I think it's impurged to open when you're not ready. So I, I, let's push to get ready.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and.
Because like Brian said, it's sitting there, it's new and, and we need to be in it.
Yeah, but I mean, if he's, it sounds like he's got equipment that he can't even hook up.
Uh well, we meet again on the sixteenth, so hopefully we can have an update.
Opioid Town Hall, have an update.
Right.
You got a what? Say that again?
Opioid Town Hall is on the sixteenth. Technically, you all have to come back in session.
Okay.
Maybe we'll have a better idea of when we can set a date then.
I will get, give you two old staff leads.
And I'll get an install update from Spectrum to me to have an update as well.
Thank you, Mr. McGirt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Boards and committee appointments. Um I have three appointments that I would like to uh offer a motion that we make. Those are Lisa Adams, Brian Gibson, and Annette Reed to the Historical Properties Committee. I'll start there. That was a motion.
I second it.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We will appoint Lisa Adams, Brian Gibson, and Annette Reed to the three um seats on the board, on the uh Historical Properties Board. All in favor, let me know by the sound of aye. Opposed like sign. Second is Sam Crib is presently a member of the Historical Properties Board, and in our last meeting, we appointed Anthony Stewart as an alternate. The board, Historical Properties Board, is asking that we switch those and make Mr. Sam Crib the alternate and make Mr. Anthony Stewart the regular appointed member, and I'll offer that as a motion as well.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we will make Sam Crib our alternate appointment and Anthony Stewart our regular appointment. All in favor, let me know by the sound of aye. Any opposed like sign? Alright, Ms. Sneed, County Manager's report.
Okay. Um several of these things will be quick updates just to let you know what's happened in the last month, and so uh I had a question last month about the Scot- Scotland County Land Use Plan, reached out to Lumber River Council of Governments. Um they are getting that plan together. They had a, an amendment signed to their contract back in uh May and gave them through December to get that done. They have told me it will not take them until December, and so they hope to present that to you and to the planning board before December. Your opioid settlement, that was just mentioned. The opioid um collaborative met already on um February eighteenth, and so they went through the options there are to use opioid settlement funds. Right now, you have over five hundred thousand dollars in opioid settlement funds. And so our next step, we have invited the Association Dalm, who are the experts on how you can spend your funds, to this town hall meeting that was just referenced on October sixteenth. That'll be at six o'clock and it'll be here, and of course, anybody from Scotland County or other counties are invited, but I would encourage you to come because that is where we're really going to start talking about the use of these funds and what you can do with those funds. And so um the experts will be here to talk about that. Still waiting on our opioid grant from East Point to determine if we receive that grant or not. The Laurinburg-Maxton Airport land swap, uh you all knew that appraisal process was done. That has been submitted to the Division of Aviation, and so we are just in a holding pattern. We did get good news that it does not have to go through a formal section one sixty-three review, which will speed up that process, and so we are hoping to hear soon that that, that, that landslide slot, land swap will be completed. North Turnpike Waterline, uh Mr. Blackwell is continuing to manage that project. HDR is scheduled to give us a scope of work for that project. If you recall, that's the engineering firm that was hired. They're scheduled to give us a scope of work probably next week. We met with them last week and they said they would have that in the next two weeks. We will also be doing, I don't know if you'd call this a campaign, an interest campaign, but almost knocking on doors, calling all residents that have the opportunity to hook into this water line in that area where it's going to be run to see are they interested in doing that. Um Mr. Black, Mr. Uh Jim, Blackwell was familiar and remember the last time or the water system was set up and the minimal fee that residents could he, hook into at the time. He suggests you use that same fee structure to allow people to do that. I want to say he said it was a hundred dollars. Don't quote me on that. We, it was a hundred dollars. We, we can get that for sure. Um and my recommendation is that you offer the same to these residents, but that's the reason for the calls, the knock on the doors. We need to know for that scope of work, how many people are interested. And so that's uh what we'll be looking to do. Start finding that interest in the next month or so. Questions on that?
Uh the, the connection fee is what we're trying to keep to be the same as what it was previously?
Yes.
Are we, it's, we're still requiring the landowner to get the water from the connection to their property that where they want it?
I think that is part of the connection fee. Um and all that would be in the scope of work, and of course, if we do that would be in an agreement each resident would have to sign i- if they want this. And so um more detail, I haven't answered that question. I understand that. More, more details will come out.
That just gets it to the meter. That, that, that just gets it to the meter. They have to, they have to do, do from the meter to the house themselves.
Right. You're saying you come, uh connection. Putting the, the meter there is a hundred dollars.
Getting the water to their meter. Mm-hmm. And, and a meter there.
Cause I'll be talking to some folk up there.
Let, let's find.
From the house, the, the resident will hook into the meter. I'm saying for that meter to be placed there, are we saying that's the hundred dollars?
Yeah. Can I ask, can I say something?
I, I think, I think what we was discussing was to, to be able to, to, for the residents to afford the initial hookup, because if, if we, if we went out there and dug it up and, and hooked it up, it's fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, so but if they get it while they're running it, then they can hook it up, and that's really, that's really in the cost of putting the pipe down itself. So you, you know, you know, it costs a little bit more than that to do it, but the thing is, you get the people on it and, and uh, and where they can afford to get on it. Because if you go out there and tell everybody it's fifteen hundred dollars to get up to it.
So you're saying the meter will be there for a hundred bucks?
Yeah, to the meter, to the meter. Yes, to the meter. Yeah.
But that's what they're going to ask.
Yeah, it's to the meter. To put a meter in is a hundred dollars, and then from now, you know, they can just.
Okay.
Get a plumber and hook the pipe up then.
So they are responsible for running it from the meter to the house?
That's correct, yeah.
I, I just think, I think that needs to be.
Set up for.
Needs to be clear.
Yeah.
Is that, I thought it was all.
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of a standard. I mean, it's kind of a, but it does need to be clear, but it's just kind of a standard thing.
It is.
Well, and we'll ma- we'll make sure we get that firmed up with the engineers, and so before we're calling anyone to say, are you interested in this, we, we will have the facts.
They're gonna, they're gonna want to know what it's going to cost.
Well, and we don't want anybody to think that for a hundred dollars, you're going to have this water running to your house, because that may not be a complete story.
And that may, whether they're interested or not is going to depend, I would think, is going to depend on how much it's going to cost them to run that.
Right. Okay, um your CCAP grant, they should hear, we should hear if we receive that ten million dollar grant this month. So when we know something about that, you'll know something about that. Um City Laurinburg and I Johnson, we finally worked out City Laurinburg, and if you remember, their city council voted a couple of years ago to help, um I guess you would say funds parts of I Johnson for two years, and that would be water, utilities, and sewer. So for fiscal year twenty-three, when they reviewed everything that they could reimburse us for, according to their city council vote, uh we will be reimbursed just over thirty thousand dollars. And so that has started again for fiscal year twenty-four. So at the end of this fiscal year, we will see what the reimbursement for this year is, so. I've been in touch with the city manager and say, uh okay, um agreed, thirty thousand dollars, and they sent all the documentation to back that up. Your town hall and your properties in East Laurinburg, we are getting some interest in those. We have realized those were never zoned for, for what type of property they are. And so we will be taking those three to the zoning board and letting them decide what type of properties are they? How are they zoned? There are people uh interested in, in the properties without the structure owner, but they, they want to put a home there. They're not zoned for that. They're not zoned for anything. So uh that's our next step, getting that, and then we can be fair with the Realtor, and he can be fair with people that are calling for specific interest for those sites. Cascades Fire Protection, uh we've moved a, a inch closer to beginning of figuring out what to do about that fire protection. If you remember, this all goes back to a fire protection plan and a contract Cascades has with Scotland County. When I say we're an inch closer, we feel like there's negotiation in that contract for the, the amount, whether the amount of water we need in a fire protection is not negotiate, negotiation, it's whether you have to have it in two separate tanks. That's what we're looking at, and so that's why we think there's room for negotiation in there. So we're worth it, working with Cascades to see if they'll modify the language in that, and we would be okay with the tanks we have out at Cascades. So we're slowly moving that forward. Uh solid waste management ordinances. We have started, I reported last week, we started a task force to review those ordinances. Uh they are old and they just need some language um upgrades, I guess you'd say. We had our first meeting um last week, and we have our second meeting scheduled for, I believe, next week. So at the meeting, we had our solid waste enforcement with the Sheriff's Department, two representatives of the Sheriff's Department, Mr. Beal, myself, uh and inspections will be at that meeting, and so we got through about half of those ordinances. So you will see us bringing those to you with recommendations for um, I guess you'd say amendments to those in the near future. Free Health Clinic Building. As of Friday, we signed the mutual agreement to transfer that building back to Scotland County's use. It was always your property, but there was an agreement that they could lease the building, and so that is now under your authority again. We still have to get all the utilities and things like that changed over to Scotland County, and so um.
Where's that building at?
That is over um beside the health department, between EMS and the health department at the ba- at the back of that lot. Right. Yes, exactly. Right there. Forgot where we were. Um and so that's something you, you can consider its use. What you, what we may need it for, use it for. Uh but it's, it's yours again. Uh local water supply plans. I reported last week that those were overdue since April. Those are being submitted this week. And then they will be due again for, on April first for, they will be current as of April first. Uh should be current. Okay, I will skip over to um the state budget awards. Uh I just put that in there. You all had seen an email before about what those state budget awards were. Um there they are. The public wants to see those, and so that is part of the money coming into Scotland County. Those are mainly the ones that the county received, and of course, there's other entities in the county that receive some state legislative funds as well. And East Laurinburg Recycling Center, we were cha- I was charged with. Is there somewhere we can find to put in East Laurinburg Recycling Center? So um went out, looking over East Laurinburg, what is for sale? What is sitting there that is not as, not in use, but is also not for sale? And so I'm looking for some direction from you all on how you want to proceed. What, what is in East Laurinburg? There are, uh and you would see this if you're driving on Business Seventy-four through East Laurinburg, you see that there are properties with buildings that are not in use, that are not in good shape, and probably could not be used in the shape that they're in. And so um we know who owns those properties, and I don't know, but I don't know if you want to pursue a recycling center on Business Seventy-four, right? Um if so, we could pursue contacting the owners of those properties. There are other properties already for sale back, as we talked about, on the service road. Um where that, like he said earlier, that is starting to get overgrown, but there is property for sale back there. Um that property has, would take a lot of cleanup, I guess you'd say. It, there's a lot of um I, I guess, uh building rubble back there, where like brick buildings were just collapsed in. And so uh that property would take a lot of cleanup, but there is um a lot of acreage back there. You wouldn't need it all. Uh in speaking with Mr. Beal, and I went out to Sneed's Grove looking at that recycling center, he says that one is set up just right. It's on about two point seven five acres. Um and there's plenty of room to drive through out there, plenty of room for traffic. They're not all the same size, but, but that would be optimal the way Sneed's Grove is set up. So I'm uh kind of looking for direction from you all or your wishes on your thoughts on placement.
You might want to factor in the zoning on that as well, since you mentioned it on that.
Right.
Are we, we going to control the zoning in that area now?
We will, or the zoning board will.
The property you're talking about, I don't even think to. They, there's been nothing done with that property.
There has not, and the owners are out of um, is it Texas? Texas. Um and so some of that property looks a little bit clearer than other parts of that. There's two tracks.
Yeah.
A very large one and a small. Um well, it's all overgrown. It's hard, it's honestly hard to see what's in there.
I believe, I believe part of that property is big parking lot.
And so uh, but again, those would be accessible from that service road, which is behind.
Is or is not? Is.
That, that is how you would get to those properties, which is, you know, runs behind. I, I say behind in East Laurinburg and parallel to the railroad track.
Is the parking lot area as big as the Sneed's Grove site?
Yes, I believe so. Well, I shouldn't say is the parking lot area. Uh the, the land for sale is well over two point seven five acres. Um now, if you want to pursue that more, I'm sure Mr. McGirt and somebody could help me get through all that, and we could see what is actually back there. One of them, um somebody had locked a fence, but the fence is now open, so we could contact the property owners and see. If they'd allow.
Only concern I got is, if we got other residents that thinking like he's thinking, and they don't want it, there's no need for it.
And is this a fix to the problem?
Right.
Is this the fix?
Right. You get, the, he came up and spoke against it.
Right.
So we need, we need to get a feel for those over there in East Laurinburg.
And um the um landfill is not that far from East Laurinburg as well, that people can take their, their trash to. Not that they want to. That's also an, another option. There used to be, I guess you'd say, a recycling center outside of the landfill, that you didn't have to drive into that, but a recycling center was set up there, and it's an option to do that again.
Well, let me ask this.
Would that be free?
That, at the landfill?
At landfill.
Free in terms of it's our land already?
When they come across the scale, it ain't, it'll be outside of the scale.
So, so let me ask this.
Hold on, one second.
Would be free.
You, you would not have to go on the scale. You'd do it outside of that area.
It would be just like another.
Just like another, right.
That's just located at the landfill.
That answer your question?
Yes, but I'm saying the one that's there now to get to it, there's two dumpsters out there now. But to get to them, you.
Yeah, what she's saying is that we could set up something just like what we have, that could be outside of that.
Outside there, okay.
Got it?
Okay, okay.
Commissioner.
So, so let me get this straight. So East Laurinburg had their own trash pickup, right? Is that correct? Okay. So couldn't we, couldn't, cause, cause they already paying the, the fee to have the trash, for the trash, but couldn't we make a deal with the city just to pick their trash up? Wouldn't that be easier than, than uh?
Yeah, paying eighty-seven dollars a year for.
I mean, wouldn't it be easier than, than building a site?
Contract, contract.
Cause they're, they're right there. I mean, ain't like they, I mean, they're, they're just driving right there. I mean.
I thought that was a conversation when we had all the switching and.
They didn't want to do it.
They didn't want it.
Oh, they didn't want to do it, okay.
That's, that's my understanding.
That's what I understood. Well, so they've had to go to independent.
Well, I mean, but, I mean, could we not pursue that and just talk to the city, uh the city manager? Well, I mean, but, I mean, could we not pursue that and just talk to the city, uh, the city manager and see if, uh, uh, if we, if, or some kind of deal could be struck for them to just pick up trash at East Laurinburg?
Contact the city manager. Oh, because they could do it for the waste management, the waste management.
I, I mean, if you're asking, I mean, I don't think it hurts to try their hearts and their change.
You know, I mean, I mean, I think that would be a lot cheaper on everyone. Sure would be a lot cheaper.
I, I thought it was the best solution at the time.
Yeah.
But.
Instead of work. Instead of going in there and building a.
But you asked, probably is it worth it to the city?
Yeah.
Had to buy equipment, hire new people.
Well, I mean, we ain't gonna ask them to do it for free.
No, no.
I mean.
They probably, probably ask.
Cause they already got the equipment. They already got the equipment. They already got the trucks. And they're, they're in walking distance just about. I mean.
Well, I mean, did, all they can tell us is no.
Yeah. I mean, I thi- I think we're to pursue that anyway and just see where it goes.
So we all in agreement to hold off on selecting a site or any of that and, and ask our county manager to go talk to the city and just see if that's an option before we move forward?
I, I, I think that's a, I think we should do that. But I don't think we wait until our next meeting to come back and decide to pursue the con- uh, convenience site.
You wanna work parallel?
Because I think, and as it, I think it's not that far out to the landfill, but I've, I think human nature is, they're gonna find the not, I'm not talking about East Laurinburg, I'm just talking about people in general. They're gonna find a, they dump it besides the road in Laurinburg because they don't wanna go to a convenience site.
Okay. So I guess we wanting to work parallel, doing both at the same time, which is perfectly fine. I think our county manager just needs from us some direction based upon the sites that she shared, how we wanna move forward. And I'm a visual person. I don't see any of these sites. I need to go see them myself, but.
Well, I, I, I was, I was under the impression from some of the folks from East Laurinburg that had spoken before that they wanted a convenience site in there. Is that, is, am I, are we hearing something different now?
I heard that, uh, residents.
We'll find out when we try to.
I know that you see a, uh, park that's on Gitching. Vince Senior, I think that's what she's talking about. It's, it, uh, well, it was the meal, it was probably worth. But I know when they have gas services in the city of Laurinburg, they still had trash everywhere.
So, Ms. Snead, so the one at the bottom is, thank you, Ms. Keller. The one at the bottom is the one off the service road?
Yeah.
Uh, well, that's privately owned as well.
That's the corner, that's the corner of Commonwealth and First Street.
It is the corner of Commonwealth and like First. That's privately owned, but it is a nice, clear tract of land inside that fence. And you see the railroad track over there to the side. So that's one privately owned. This at the top is right on Business seventy-four. Uh, but again, privately owned, but, uh, and it basically an abandoned building, um, that I'm not sure.
I think it used to be the old Mayola or something.
Something. And, and honestly, there, there's more than one of those on Business seventy-four, but the question goes back to, do you wanna, uh, want it on Business seventy-four?
I, I wouldn't want it.
So, and, and I, I, I thought, and so then our other option, of course, is, or what we could do before your next meeting is try to get back permission to look at what is on those acres that are for sale. That's on the service road. What is in there? And maybe Mike's opinion on what would it take to clean that up, to turn it into a site?
I think that's a big question because if you got falling down buildings, you're talking about a lot of work.
Lot of money.
Right.
I've been in there. Yeah, it is wrong.
And if, uh, and you say this is available for sale?
No, these are not.
Privately owned. Hmm. That draws the number of, oh, no worries.
Um, but the top is someone from out of town, so who knows?
Yeah.
But again, it's on Business seventy-four. So if you're stay, if you wanna stay away from that, then I'm gonna quit talking about those options.
I, I, it sounds as if the agreement is to stay off Business seventy-four.
Yes.
Um, and so for, if you and Mr. McGirt can look at other sites that are not on Business seventy-four and, and what would probably be our better options with less, um, demolition? Okay.
It's playing.
You have anything else?
Um, other, the, only other thing I have in my report is IT services for Scotland County.
Okay.
Um, so our, we have, um, you may look at it as an opportunity. But I think we have what I consider a decision to make about Scotland County IT services. Um, we have a vacant position in those services, uh, our department head. And so, um, that leaves us with an opportunity to, or, or a few options to continue as we are with the model we are using, which means there's one department head for county IT and then their staff. And we are doing this internally. We're going this internally on our own. However, certain departments in the county have started to pull away from that and already contract outside providers for management of their IT and for security. So honestly, right now, we have this mixed model we have gotten into. Um, another option is that we consider outsourcing our county IT services for the day-to-day management and for security.
In, in those departments that have their own contract with somebody, does it manage everything within that department?
Yes, it does.
And I would assume that is health department, social services?
No, the departments that outsource are nine-one-one, um, and EMS and the Sheriff's Department.
And how has that worked?
And then we are also outsourcing our networking for Scot- for all of Scotland County. We are outsourcing our networking, um, our networking.
Register of deeds office.
Register of deeds, IT supports them, um, but they also have that. Supports them. Yes. And they also have that, but you know, laid on top of that is that cloud-based system.
With COT.
Ms. Snead, what is your recommendations?
I, I, I thought long and hard about this. I, I think we are living in a time that IT security is scary. Um, people are sitting around trying to figure out how to hack, for lack of better words, and trying to figure out how to get over on, on private companies, on, um, counties. You know, everybody's heard of the ransom type of things. Uh, I think it's a scary environment. I think the IT world is ever-changing every day. And it takes an expertise that I don't know that we can pay for anymore. Uh, in, in, in an end, in a one individual, if that makes sense, or, or three or four individuals to keep us current and to keep us secure.
So your suggestion would be that we investigate outs, just?
A- at least investigate and see if it's, i- i- if we could even afford it as a county compared to what we're spending now.
Because you have no idea right off what that's even looks like as far as.
No.
Cost.
No. Um, I, I've taken liberty, I hope I didn't overstep, to determine what would it take, uh, if we moved in this direction. Uh, we think this could be a, uh, services contract, so you would not have to put out a formal RFP. We wanna make sure we get that answer locked in. Um, because of course, we wanna do this legitimately and by the books. And, uh, if we don't have to do a formal RFP process, then of course, we could do an informal bidding process and get several quotes and determine which way to go.
This has been a statewide problem in County Attorney's Conference. It was a major topic last year. And when you factor in the cost, you have to balance the cost associated when you have an incident like we had here locally with the register of deeds office against whatever it is you're paying for the service to protect yourself.
Yeah, um, we're, we're seeing presentations more and more, even at our commissioner's, um, conference, there was a president's presentation from the army a- about hacking and security and making sure your security is where it needs to be. Um.
Ms. Snead, I guess on the flip side of that, I'm just sitting here thinking, let's say the number comes back and is much more than what we can afford. Are we providing any training to our present IT staff to ensure that they are staying up to date on all this cybersecurity and, and all these matters? How mu- to what extent are they being, receiving training?
Right now, where I've been in the last few days is determining where our county is at. What, what, what our networks loo- look like, uh, what kind of protections we have on our networks. And so I don't know that the county has been kept abreast, our staff have been kept abreast on train, training. I would not go out on a limb and say, yes, we have.
Have you ventured out, speak with the school board, City of Laurinburg, to see what they're using?
The City of Laurinburg contracts their IT services out, um, to, to a particular provider.
That's a whole lot smaller than ours is.
How about, do we?
I don't know about the, the school system. I know at one time they, they had IT staff on the ground.
Yeah. I, I think it's worth investigating. And I think there's, there's probably other counties who have either are going through this or have already done it. Who probably could give us some direction.
Okay.
And, uh, but I think I, I've, I've always, I've kind of felt that having our own IT department is, we're just waiting for some disaster to really happen. Not that they're not qualified, but for the staff of two or three or four to try to keep up with all of the advantages that the public has out there to, to, to do something harmful to the system is, is pretty great.
I agree with Mr. Gibson. This thing's every day changing.
I, I also need your, um, I guess I need your opinion on how you wanna move forward immediately. And I think, um, tha- that's, we would need to go in a closed session for that.
Okay.
We have that scheduled.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, if y'all want to wait, we close that track to do.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do. Any other questions for her now before we move forward? We'll come back to that. Okay? Uh, Commissioner News, and I'm gonna start with you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Alfer. Commissioner Gibson.
Hey, me, I do have something. Como Festival Saturday was a great success at IEJ. Those who didn't attend, not one issue. Now, I was there. It went off really well. Saw a lot of older folks, came back for the plaque that they presented beside the roadside. And it was very emotional. Those who wasn't there, Ms. Snead was there. The north side of town looks very Johnsonist dear to the north side of town. You can feel it in the atmosphere. Folks was there to show his respect to the former leaders and to the graduates who graduated from IEJ. I felt a sense of pride. I walked those halls from the fourth grade up to the eighth grade and hearing those old folks and that IEJ old cheer. It's awful. I know you was a carer, I think. But to hear those old cheers from those old folks out there, it was good to, to, to hear that. And it, 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 it brought me a sense of pride to be able to be on this board and to help transform IEJ into something that our community can be proud of. So I enjoyed myself.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazel. Only thing I have, fellow commissioners, um, last year, we did a holiday appreciation dinner for our staff. And, um, just wanting to have a conversation if that's something that we wanted to, to do again this year. Um, Jason and I kind of worked pretty hard to plan that last year. And Jason, uh, just put the bug in my ear today that if we're gonna do it, now would be the time. But if we're not, um, he'd rather we not come up later and decide that we wanted to. So wanted to just throw that out and see if that was something that you all were interested in doing this year.
You guys have a comment?
That's a question, yeah.
Well, I think you would check with the department head to see if they folk want it. If they want it, you would approve it for them to have it.
I think the response last year from the, the employees was pretty positive. I mean, I think they felt appreciated that we thought enough to do it. So I guess my, my suggestion would be that we do it.
Yeah, if they want it.
I agree. I, I think we should do it.
Okay.
If they want it.
All right, Jason, we'll start working on and come up with a report at our next meeting. Okay? Okay. All right. Um, we will now move, uh, actual motion to moving to closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven six.
So moved.
Been moving in probably second that we're moving to closed session. All in favor, they've been known by the sign of aye.
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 Pose like sign. Thank you all so much for coming to be with us tonight.